I would now like to call the Longmont Housing Authority Board of Commissioners, October twenty first, twenty twenty five, maybe to order. Can we have a roll call? Let's start with you, counselor, I mean commissioner.
Commissioner Yarborough.
Commissioner Chris.
Commissioner McCoy.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Chair Pep.
Commissioner Yarborough.
Lauren Selly, Assistant Director.
Quincy Moran, Regional Property Manager.
Molly Donald, Housing Director.
Erica Maris, Executive Assistant.
Kendra Daniels, Accounting Supervisor.
Harold Dominguez, Senior Executive Director.
Commissioner Pocken.
Tiffany Hall, Assistant Senior Assistant Assistant Director.
And Sarah Aronis, Community Manager. Okay, great, thank you. Are there any revisions to the agenda?
No.
No? Submission of documents? Do we have any of those? Nothing, okay, great. Can I have a motion to approve, review and approve the Arts Nineties?
So moved.
Second.
Voted by Commissioner McCoy, sent by Commissioner Yarborough. Are there any comments? Corrections? Seeing none, let's vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That passes unanimously. We have public invited to be heard. You have three minutes per speaker. And I'm like, that we need. Who do we have first?
Maybe we need to have like, I'm already done, so we keep talking since that way. And I'm having many troubles with Alita and I'm not happy cameras. This morning, my box is being stacked with heavy boxes. Down on me. Hit me, hit my shoulder, hit my arm. And I'm getting down, I'm almost down, all the way down. And I had to get inside to not stack things on top of each other. But I can't lift anything heavy because I have a lot of hard conditions. But it just goes in one ear and out the other, as many cars down there. I can't live there anymore. I have to get out of there and I am moving in November, next month, the twenty fifth of November. Because the cold air, I'm out of this, that's disagreeing with me anymore because of my viral mileage. But this is another, we apply, I refuse to pay rent the last few minutes because nothing went right. After the water pipe broke, because structural work was ongoing for about a month. To restore my apartment to where it was. But when they started moving my things back into their second bedroom, I was not allowed in that depth to supervise the way things should go, the way they should go because I'm so short. And some, you already know how tall I am, I'm only four foot six. And I cannot lift anything over ten pounds because of my physical disability. But they don't care about you or your safety or anybody, not just me, but anybody else in that apartment building. They don't care. You could ask for help, but it goes in one ear and out the other. And you don't know how frustrating that is for us. There are other people who use power wheelchairs as well, some use cans, some use crutches, some use walkers. Some use wheelchairs, one man who can't even walk. And I just don't know what to do. I'm not happy living there anymore because we're very frustrated and very disappointed. And I just, like I said, I don't know what to do. It hurts. But I do everything in my power to keep myself safe. I do everything in my power to keep everyone else safe too, because I know somebody else that lives there who are disabled, do not take it there. And... I'm just very disappointed with Alita. And it makes me down there because like I said, I told them many times, do not stack things on top of each other. If I need help, I expect you to give to me when I ask for it. But they don't. So something's got to change. Come on, people, we could do better than this. I know a lot of my, I grew up in this area. And we've all done better than this.
It's time.
So please.
Thank you, lucky.
Good luck.
Good luck in your new place. Does anyone else that would like to speak?
Sure. I'm getting married in December, so I'm moving to Texas next month.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. I wanted to make up for work last meeting, I don't know yet, I think you're far yet.
Seeing no one else, is your thought, Lance?
Yeah, I got today's date. Today is National Apple Day. It is also National Back to the Future Day, so I'll see you tomorrow. It's also National Rich Hazel Day. And National Pharmacy Tech Day, and I liked them guys lately. And National Reptile Awareness Day. So everybody knows what day it is, and have a nice day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, anyone else need more gummies, they'll be out there on the table.
Thank you.
Georgia.
I guess I will talk.
Yes.
I know a lot of you people, I'm Georgiana Johnston, and I'm probably going to be speaking for a lot of people where I live. We had a situation that wasn't good. And I just wanted to mention in a nice way, and not act like that it's a wrong situation. But where I live, I just feel like that they had some people that have serious mental problems, and I don't understand why. They let them in because it's a danger. And there was a whole bunch that was involved that was in the danger. And so they're gone now, thank the Lord. John does a good job, I don't want to complain about the wrong situations. I come and talk to different ones. But I just don't understand why, I know they had background checks and different situations when I moved in many, many years ago, so. And I'm eighty-one, believe it or not, had open heart surgery a year ago. So I just, I just don't understand the situation of bringing people that have serious issues and they take it out on other people. So anyway, I know you're all trying to work and do your best, but I think that some way, somehow, we got to have safety. Sarah's come and they told about safety, so has Harold. And that's all I ask for, and I enjoy it where I live. I want to be a blessing in the people, but I'm dealing with different managers right now, John, and they're good. So I just wanted to say that in a nice way, that I don't quite understand because I know they do. My husband used to be on the housing board, many years ago, he's been dead six months now, but he was a commercial for years too, so. Anyway, I just wanted to run that across to you, that we are ninety, eighty, seventies, some sixties, but there's a lot of the old or two, and you know. Nobody wants to live where you feel dangerous and not safety, so. Anyway, thank you very much for listening to me, I appreciate your talking. Keep doing a wonderful job.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else over there? Okay, so we'll close public invited to be heard, and move on to our agenda of old and new business. The first thing, the first item is a cent over crossing construction, construction virtual tour.
Right, everyone, so I'm going to be introducing you to a cent as it looks at two weeks ago. These posts are, there's already changed from this point, but the reason we're doing a virtual tour is as we get closer into construction, into the end of construction, you can see a lot of the fun stuff now. But the sun is going down quicker, and scheduling an after-hours tour with the construction crews that are not always available for that, and also council schedules. We thought we would just do a virtual tour for now, and then of course we'll do a grand opening at some point in twenty twenty-six. So just as a reminder, we're under construction. The construction schedule was targeted to end in February. They're moving quickly along, and the anticipation is that it'll be done in December at this point. So that will be pairing up with leasing soon after. So here we are, as of two weeks ago. So this is the facade as it stands. This is up on the north end of the property, looking west down the sidewalk. I don't have a pointer, but the far end of the building is where the Early Childhood Education Center will be. And then what you're looking at straight here is units. Here's from the north building, looking down onto the parking lot, showing the units on wrapping around, and then that's the community building in the center. We have a parking lot, which is very exciting, it's not as much of a money affair anymore. Here's just a picture of the building facade. It does really, I don't think these pictures do it justice. It just looks really sharp, and I think the design was really well done. Here's an example of one of our kitchen layouts. Again, we have four different, well, we have multiple layouts, but one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom, four bedroom. So this is only one kitchen layout. But it's a pretty great look. We've got tile backsplash, which isn't always common in affordable housing developments. We have quartz countertops, soft closed drawers, and so much storage.
Seven different floor plans.
Thank, yes, thank you. On the left there, that door is a large pantry, which also, I think for any apartment living, is hard to find these days.
Are those materials kind of built to last?
Yeah, we were pretty intentional, knowing, you know, living through inheriting properties that were built further in the past. Also, our first development project, Aspen Meadows, where we know that the design at that time was more of a, let's do what we can do on a pretty, it was a much smaller budget. And doing what they can do, and they did great with that. But we do know that, for example, the flooring material at Aspen Meadows, we would have, if this team had come in and had come in with lessons learned, we would have selected a different material to make sure that that was not going to cause problems. So that was something we're really intentional about here. Here's an example of, let's see, this is one of our bedrooms. This is not a walk-in closet, but we do have a walk-in closet in every unit type, at least one. This is, I think this is one of our, oh, it looks like my pictures are, yep. One of our smaller units, the, I think that's the one bedroom with the living area there. But what you can really see is every single unit has a truly usable balcony with actual living space out there, which is pretty exciting. In the bathrooms, we're using durable materials, tile surrounds, which I think is going to help us in the long run. And also, it is just good with competing with newer market rate rentals that are coming online, just making sure that you can't distinguish what we're doing from the market rate. Here's a hallway for now. We have cool design elements coming in, and you can see kind of a sneak peek of the, the accent walls for paint, and just a great design element on those windows. They just, it just looks like there's a lot of thought put in. Ash doors with kick plates, formlessness. Here's the, a closer-up shot of the community building, which we're about to go inside. And so right here is going to be, you're looking right, the dirt right in front of the photo, is going to be kind of general patio area for all residents. And then to the, looking to our left, is the playground area, the play equipment, it's more like play features for kids that will be targeted for those living in the units. Because again, the, an Early Childhood Education Center has its own gated playground, so two playgrounds on site. This is the inside of the community building. We have since gotten tile on that fireplace, and flooring is installed just here. We did a tour with the advisory board here last week, and we're able to check that out. I think we have one more phone, oops, wrong direction. Oh, there we go, the other direction. So that's going to be the community kitchen area. And then far off towards the windows is going to be desks built in along the side for people that are either working remote and need a space, or maybe kids getting tutoring help, or really it's going to be multifunctional. And in the back corner will be a small indoor children's play area and kind of cozy corner. There's some built-in shelving back there for games and books. And we'll have furniture in this area as well, facing the fireplace. This is the mail area that is under construction, and the color has already changed. So this is the entrance, the side entrance that kind of goes into the property management area of the community building. But all the mailboxes are since installed. Further back in this building, there is a very large maintenance shop, which our maintenance team is very excited about. We've got really well-designed property management office space and conference rooms for meetings with clients and residents, et cetera. Oh, there they are, that's the wall of office space, nice and bright. This is the inside of the Early Childhood Education Center. A lot more paint has gone up since, flooring is going in as of last week. This is the entrance, so the, on the far end of the photo, that's where you enter from that corner of Eighteenth and Cook. And then the stairs are running upstairs, so we have two classrooms downstairs intended for the littler kids, and one classroom upstairs for the bigger kids. There is one elevator in the entire development, and it is here in the Early Childhood Education Center. It's going to look very cool. It's a very natural theme, where the top looks like sky, the floor looks like river, the kids can kind of follow the path, and it was just really designed with kids in mind. And I can't wait to see more exciting pictures of that part. Here's the beginnings of one of the classrooms. So this is, it looks like a ground floor classroom, so it's one of the two for the smaller kiddos. They have, they're fully built in with, you know, tiny, tiny potties and everything that goes into an Early Childhood Education Center classroom. Elsewhere in the ECE side of the building, upstairs, there's meeting space, office space, a break room. There is a warming kitchen for where they're going to prepare food on site for the kids, so that's all upstairs to keep the amount of kids that they're used, going up and down to just the necessary amount. Here is an example, this is a mock-up right now. We are having an artist prepare a mural. So this is the elevator shaft, so the units, those are units on the left side, Early Childhood Education Center on the right. We're actually, we're still design coordinating on the middle photo of the child, we want it to be children of some sort, but because the, we're still playing with it, but it's very prominent, but, which kind of distracts from, if you look at the top, you'll find a B in the middle, an O, L. The child is an O, and then another O, and then an M at the bottom. So if you stare at it long enough, you can see the word bloom, which is intended to go with, you know, ascent. It's about, the entire property is about improving lives and for kids to be able to plant roots and grow. So that is just a mock-up, it's still being finalized, but I'm really excited to see that as well.
Great. I'm going to have to look at it and stare and see if I can see the.
Right, so that's not up on the wall yet, this is just a rendering.
Okay.
But we're finalizing the design here in the next few days. So I just wanted to give a quick sneak peek, because taking tours is always so much fun, but scheduling is not always fun, so let me know if there's any questions, and of course, when we do the grand opening, you can do the full tour, get the real sense of it. Right, I'll pass that along.
Are you taking applications yet for this?
Yes, so I think when we get to property management updates, we'll be able to give a lot more detail on that.
Okay. Bad debt write-offs.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's looking right at you.
So we have to, in our bad debt policy, Harold can write off anything that's five thousand and below, but anything that's above five thousand, we have to take to the board. So we do have two of those. One of them is a deceased tenant, so a lot of what you're actually writing off is the subsidy amount. So subsidy agencies can usually only pay up to fourteen days when someone passes away. So after that, if you have to go to eviction court and get it out, you're, you still have that rent accumulating, and then you have to write it off. The other one was an abandoned unit that individual moved, but was still getting the voucher, and so the voucher team realized they were not on site, couldn't get them to respond to anything, they canceled the voucher. Same situation where you go months and months to actually prove that that person's not living there, go through eviction court, to gain possession of the house again. So most of what you're writing off is actually the HCV portion, or PDV portion of the amount that gets transferred from the subsidy side to the tenant side for writing it off. Ceaseases are, one of them I don't know, does that one go to collections? I know the one that's ceased doesn't go to collections, but we might have sent the other one to collections.
Yeah, it's there.
Okay. So as you know, we haven't seen anything from any of the collections that we've ever sent, so it's there, but finding that individual is what's.
So you need a motion?
We need a motion to approve those.
Okay, a question for you.
Just on the, on the deceased one?
Yeah.
That's seventy-two oh six. Is the balance due, is that because of collections before the person passed away? Or is it since the person passed away while the unit was still occupied?
It would have been passed away, why? The unit was not occupied, and you still have rent until you gain possession of that unit. So the rent still holds until you're actually.
So we weren't, we weren't able to like fill that as a vacancy?
You can't until you gain possession.
Because we didn't have possession of?
Yeah, you don't have, if they don't have a next of kin to release possession, then you have to go through the full eviction process and go to court and get the court to say now you have possession.
Even though they're dead.
Yes.
So I, so I move the write-off vote this? Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, write off the balance, yeah, presently.
Now a second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner McCoy, on the move that we write off vote back at, units, or whatever.
Yeah, presented.
Seconded by Commissioner Yarborough. Any discussion? Same, yes?
So where's, where's the money coming from that we are writing this off of?
So the money, so the money didn't come in?
No, I mean, where, how are we covering that gap?
We can't cover that gap, like it's a vacancy. It's a vacancy loss. It's not technically a vacancy loss, it's like we.
It's a loss, it's not something we have to act in respect. Correct, got you, thank you.
Okay. All right, let's vote, all those in favor of writing it off?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That passes unanimously, thank you. Was that all you had on?
Yes.
Okay, great. We need to go to budget presentation now. Is that you, Harold, or Molly?
The two of us. The two of us will do this.
Together.
So we'll start, so some of the twenty twenty-six budget challenges are always our HCV vouchers. They're portable. Last year we did kind of budgeted seventy-five percent, and went with eighty-five percent this year because we were seeing additional revenue coming in that didn't give us enough for our operations. So I added eighty-five percent this year for our HCV vouchers, we now budget at a hundred. Senior properties, we are seeing a struggle with our fifty and sixty percent units. AMSA has seven or eight vacancies that we've had, kind of had to do an analysis. Those vacant units are like fourteen, twelve a month, and a lot of seniors don't have that coming in, especially when we do two times the rent. So we knocked it down to twelve fifty, we're still having trouble bringing people in, we might have to knock it down more, but we're kind of weighing that out. We did knock one down, I was able to knock one down to a thousand ninety-eight, but with the operational costs at that property, it's, it's pretty tough. It's a fifty percent unit complex, and most of them are all fifty percent AMI units. So there's not a real mix, and there's not enough units to be able to fluctuate what they brought into that property.
This is one where you may see us come back with potential requests for use of fund balance. So one of the things that we're finding as we talk to people who are in the market rate world, is that they will have units roughly in the same area, but they're not seeing, we can, Molly, they're not necessarily seeing the fifty and sixty percent AMIs vacant. So for us, it's kind of created a question, creating a question as to, so why aren't we seeing a vacant? In this case, there's a few things that starts showing up. One, believe it or not, when this was built, and this was the one that went through recent indication that was started with the previous housing authority, that we just had to take over, well, they don't have dishwasher. And so that is one of the things that we've heard from folks is, doesn't have a dishwasher, people will say they're not interested in it. The other thing that's interesting that we're starting to hear, and this, and seeing more and are working on this, is that in terms of amenities, it doesn't have the same amenities that some of the other locations have, so being small recreation areas. So they're evaluating some, I think, third floor common area to see if there's an opportunity to put some, partner with, there's some gyms that you can submit a request to, and they'll give equipment to see what we can do. So those are two things that we're examining from a amenity perspective that we're seeing as a bit of a headwind. When Kendra talks about the fifty percent in the rent, and you have to have two times the amount of rent to pay for it, that's obviously showing itself as a problem for folks. And another thing that we started looking at is really the opportunity to have, just dropped it.
Guarantors.
Guarantors. To guarantee the rent for a particular place. They'd actually run into situations where somebody's child is willing to be the guarantor for a person, but our system doesn't allow for it. Actually, it's not uncommon in the world, I was telling them, I had to do that for both of my kids in their apartments and for Collins, and so there is a provision, and you're having to do it for your daughter at school. So there is a way within Yardi to actually implement a guarantor component to this, and so we're going to be exploring that. We have to check with the investors and others, I think, to make sure. So there's things that we're trying to figure out to maybe bridge some of the challenges that we have. The one thing on this, in this fifty to sixty percent world, that the, the person that has like six hundred units in this community brought up to us is, what are we losing where somebody could be right on the cusp? They could qualify, but they can also get something that's not income qualified, so they're not having to go through all the paperwork process. The other piece is, you know, just the concept of something that's mine about living in an affordable housing complex. And so this is, we're really struggling with this, because what we're seeing in the market's not necessarily aligning here, we know there's some bits that we can adjust. So we did the math on, for example, on countertop dishwashers, and I think we can't just do it on the ones people are moving into, we need to do it for all of them. I think we came out that that was going to be roughly, let's say, thirty to forty thousand. That may be something we come back to you all as a board asking to use fund balance for, because at the end of the day, what that really means for the financial position of the property, it actually puts it in a much stronger position if we can get all the units.
It's an investment.
It's an investment to generate rent if we need to. So just wanted you to know that this is something that's taken a lot of Quincy Moran's time and attention, and we all have these conversations about what is it that we need to do to maybe shift the needle a little bit?
So the other one was employment. You know, last year we budgeted at a hundred percent, we're looking to match with the city's doing at a hundred and one percent. For most of our positions, that, that is a small increase, probably anywhere from fifteen hundred to twenty-five hundred. There were, our custodian positions probably had the largest increase, they went through market and got a higher increase. But we're looking at about seventy-eight K adjustment with benefits on that.
Seventy-eight, seventy-eight across the board?
Seventy-eight across, yeah, seventy-eight K across the board. So moving on to rent increases. Hearthstone and the Lodge, those are our two properties, and those budgets get submitted to HUD. We did capital needs assessments for both properties, and after talking to the HUD doc, she said, go ahead and submit it in full, but realize you're probably not going to get that. So what we found with both the Lodge and the Hearthstone, we had both an operational increase and a replacement reserve increase, and that's what the capital needs assessment does. So there's seven point five seven in operational and forty-five point two nine for capital reserves. The Hearthstone, we have eight point seven nine for operational and thirty point eleven for capital reserves. The Hearthstone, we have eight point seven nine for operational and thirty point eleven for capital reserves. Um, so we've submitted those, we haven't heard back, but they're also shut down, so, um, there might be, um, we did put some contingency money on the LHA side because what happens with these two properties is we usually have to upfront money. They, we still get paid what we're getting paid today for their rent, but the increase usually comes five, um, four to five months after their contract date is up, and so then we have to go backwards. So LHA might actually have to upfront money depending on the need, um, and the, and the repairs that happen within the first four or five months. But for the Hearthstone and Lodge, that doesn't affect the tenants. The tenants pay thirty percent of the rent all the time, so whatever we increase to, it's really all on HUD. Okay. So it's whether or not HUD can sustain that, um, that funding or relasting. And they may get some portion of our operational and, um, our reserves. The next is the suites, um, they are federally funded and the Zinnia is state-funded vouchers. Um, Zinnia is technically a third-party management company, so it's not necessarily something you're approving, but we kind of wanted to give you an idea where they stand and what their voucher amounts are going to stay the same at eighteen twenty-three. And then the suites apartments are also staying the same. So since they are split fifty-fifty between MHP and LHA, LHA's in shortfall. We usually, so if we ask for an increase from MHP, we usually go there first, if they accept it, then we go to LHA. We didn't do that this year because we can't increase any amounts because we're in shortfall. So we left the amounts the same. Um, and I'm thankful we're with that. Again, these properties also pay thirty percent of their income, so any increase would never affect these properties.
And what is the market value for a one-bedroom?
The fair market is eighteen, well, is eighteen twenty-three, so Zinnia is getting the, the market value right now for their one-bedrooms. Um, we, when we came out on board, we realized they weren't actually get, asking for increases from MHP. So we kind of did it, we requested the full amount, they only could do so much. Um, so that was our contract amount, I believe that we got, um, in twenty-twenty-three.
Okay.
So, and that wasn't even at the full twenty-twenty-three rate.
Connected to this and some conversations we'll have in the future, uh, down the road, and one of the slides on fund balance, that's actually a question we're trying to answer right now, because and state law may change some of this, but when you look at what is market rate, what's a market rent? Well, they say that's the published rent, but we do know that there are apartments that have additional fees that you have to pay just to live there. And so I'll use example, my son and daughter, or my son, you know, you pay the rent, but then you have to pay, his is not as bad, you have to pay like a ten-dollar parking fee to park in, to park in a lot. Um, and you pay more if you want covered parking, obviously, but just parking a lot, you have to pay ten dollars a lot. So what we, what we're seeing is we're seeing that this is occurring just generally and it's not just long line, it's all over. And so understanding what is the actual functional rent to live there is a different question now. They're changing some of that with state laws, so hopefully we'll get a better sense, but we can give you a number, but then understanding what is the real number is something that Molly and I've on a different side have been spending some time to try to figure out, what is that, what does that really look like?
Kendra?
Yeah.
Do you perceive there's any problem with state funding or is it, is it in their budget? Did it make the cut?
Um, that, that I don't know, I mean, that, these are state-funded vouchers, so Molly might never speak.
There's a freeze on new state-funded vouchers, but we have not heard anything about budget impacts to existing vouchers.
And then I guess the same question in regards to HUD. If this situation doesn't resolve very quickly, how does that impact you or does it?
Like, as far as like the shutdown? Um, so we're still being funded, um, they, they're still sending us money, our, our voucher money, um.
So you might not get the increase, but.
We are going to get the increase. Um, we've already submitted everything, they had us submit a bunch of stuff before the shutdown occurred. Um, of course, they gave us the deadline and then it shut down two days before that. So, um, we got all our information in, they pretty much guaranteed, they, well, I shouldn't say they guaranteed. They said that everybody that's in shortfall looked like they would be funded and not have a problem. Um, obviously, things could change when they come back and so we won't, we won't know until then. But as far as we're still getting, you know, we're getting payments every month still, even though they're shut down. They do have that set up.
Okay.
So.
No need to worry.
No need to worry yet. Yeah.
Actually, I think they, they have gotten us in a better position by being tenacious and working with the HUD folks to get the information into shortfall, into the shortfall process. So because of that, we're in and we've submitted everything, which is a good thing because if you didn't go in and didn't submit it, then it could be a different world for me.
So all our other properties, we are, um, going to press, request a zero percent rental increase this year. Um, but what I did was an evaluation of the population, the units, their AMIs, and what are we getting? So a lot of them we do have, a lot of HCV vouchers, we have PBD vouchers, and what we're finding that in the end, we're actually making more than what we would in the track, chaffa rents. So because we're making more, with the exception of Anna Sane, that's the one, the one special child property that we have. Um, and what we were also seeing at other properties is, is the increase was causing them to either move in with family or, or relocate. Um, and so we feel, we wondered if there could be a waterfall effect, if we did a rent increase, that we would also lose more and then still also be in the struggle at other properties, um, trying to fill those fifty and sixty percent units because they all have them. So we decided that a zero percent rental increase would be applied to all the remaining properties this year and I still was able to work with that within the operational budget. So, that's the request this year. This is our twenty-twenty-six fair market rent standard, so these would be for any HCV, um, and or PBD vouchers we have. Um, we would like to adopt the twenty-twenty-six fair market rent standards. What that means is for any landlord that is currently at the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four fair market, and that would be like our PBDs, so like Fall River and those entities are at the twenty-twenty-four rate, they will remain frozen because the twenty-twenty-four rate was higher than twenty-twenty-five or twenty-twenty-six. For any landlord that is below the twenty-twenty-six rate, that is the rate they could go up to. Um, but anything outside of that would be at the tenant's expense. So that is our, um, our request for, um, the fair market standards.
So this applies to people that are staying in our facilities, but it also applies to people who are utilizing a housing choice voucher in a private, um, rental unit. And here's the interesting piece, and you think about shortfall, so we talked about shortfall, here are all the steps that we have to go through. But you still adopt the fair market standards, and so even though we're in shortfall, if a private landlord says, "I want to, I want to go to the fair market value," we have to move in there.
Oh, okay.
And, and so that also then, in this case, applies to us. But it's, it's a unique thing that's happening within the voucher funding world, they don't, you can't say no.
And you can't drop somebody down without giving notice. So they have to get almost like two, um, two recertification cycles, so it could be almost twenty-four months before you actually could reduce them. Um, you can get a waiver and we did submit a waiver to HUD in case we needed to act on that. Um, they asked for additional information, we submitted that, but we haven't, but again, they're shut down, so we haven't heard back on that. So we did do a waiver that, and what the waiver does is it says, you can notify somebody and they have thirty days. So then the next recertification, they would automatically go down to that standard. Um, but I don't think in our population, a lot of them were up at the twenty-twenty-four fair market standard to begin with.
I can't remember who was here in twenty-four when they did this, I think everybody but Commissioner Parkin. Um, when they released that, we all kind of went, man, that's hot.
Yeah.
And HUD overshot big time, and so then they're in a correction mode, which has really created a challenge for almost everyone that lived in twenty-twenty-four because you're, we're in this weird space in those markets.
So the next are the property budgets. I want to kind of give you a high level, I mean, each property's going to be different, they're built differently, they have different, um, operational costs. Um, they have different snow removal, they have different landscaping depending on, um, how they're built and, and the actual landscaping they have around them, so.
Let me think real quick. So before Kendra goes into this, what we've done is we broke this down by asking Meadows senior, asking Meadows and you'll see if breaking this down. From what you're used to looking at, think of this, um, if you're looking at it from the city's budget perspective, each one of these family units is equivalent to its own fund with, within the city budget. So we operate each one of these units as its own budget and its own fund and with all the different investors, we have to be really careful, so then when you see it roll into the general fund, what we're doing is what we do in, in the city's general fund where we have the, um, ATF fees where we charge for services to the different funds, we have to do the same thing here in charging for the services to the individual, um, complexes within the overall portfolio. And, and you'll see some differences in terms of some may have higher tenant service fees or, um, um, accounts that are designed for activities, and it's really dependent on what that individual property can afford within their overall budget.
So what we start out is with all the employees and the salary allocation to start building this out. Um, for the admin fluctuations, what you'll see is the allocation of positions. So we did have to change, um, last year we kind of learned with bringing on a third-party management property, which is Zinnia, um, we split all of our assistance up to be dedicated at certain properties, whereas before, we actually dedicate them and cross them across all properties. And that really caused an operational this year, um, for us, so I had to move them back, our assistance back to being fully allocated across all of our properties with the exception of the Hearthstone and the Lodge, to bring some of them back into budget because some of them were falling in red, it just didn't work, um, anymore to do that process. And then what we asked, um, Zinnia is that instead of having this split combo that they would take on a full-time community manager, not just because of our budget fluctuations, but because it would just be better for the property to have somebody full-time and dedicated to that property instead of splitting people. Um, so that's kind of where you'll see add, oh, yeah.
Uh, no, uh, what's the advantage to having a balloon payment?
There's an advantage to that?
I know, I don't, I've never.
Float away.
I've never, why did you do that?
So, so why we're doing this is because we do have some additional money. Um, there is, there will be a, there is a balloon payment.
A payment, yeah.
So, so, so we didn't, we didn't, that was started when that was developed.
Oh, okay.
In terms of, there was a balloon payment that is due in twenty-twenty-nine, and so what she's doing is actually paying, trying to pay down on it.
Okay.
Ahead of time.
If we can.
If we can, we're probably going to have to refinance it.
It was the way it was structured. She just getting thirty-year mortgage or something instead of.
This is the, at least the second property that we knew there was a balloon payment on. Briarwood had a balloon payment due a couple of years ago as well, which we refinanced before that came due. But that was, when these mortgages were done, it made it two thousand eight, which that was a thing before two, later in two thousand eight.
Yeah, we don't do that, we don't do that.
We wouldn't choose that now.
Yeah, and this property is actually in the process of, um, trying to get the investor to exit. So we probably wouldn't look at refinancing and get their approval, um, until after that happens. So if we can make some balloon payment, balloon payments, I can put it that, that in there.
So, so before we stray too far from A, A, AMSA on the left, just in full transparency, we, we did have um, a bit of a challenge, uh, because we were trying to balance AMSA and what was really taking AMSA into the negative was some things that they wanted to occur at Zinnia. And, um, we had to have a pretty frank conversation, just in case you hear about it, to say, I can't ask them or bring something to you that weakens the overall portfolio and what we're trying to do to do what you want to do. So your choice is, you need to hire the full-time property manager and do this because we're not going to put it on the backs of the other properties to create a bad budget within these properties. So you know, if you hear it, that was definitely a position that Lauren and Quincy and Molly brought to me in terms of the challenge and, and I just, I had to end it and just say, this is what we're going to do and I can't weaken the other properties. So.
Okay. So for utilities, you'll see, um, some properties didn't budget enough, um, and some properties were overbudgeted, um, like Village on Main. We actually budgeted at the old Village Place, which had all of electricity, but now we have solar. Now that we're seeing the, um, the bills come in, it's a lot less, so you'll see a reduction in rent utilities. Um, there were some other ones that, most of them are a reduction in our portfolio, the one that actually isn't is Zinnia. They, they didn't budget enough, so I am increasing their, um, utility budget. Um, obviously, all of these budgets go to the investors for approval, um, so they may come back and ask us to do other stuff, um, but we do give rise approval first. The maintenance.
Question on the utilities there?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so I was looking across all of the different property budgets and under utilities, it seems to be the most interesting from, it's, it's all over the place in terms of the direction that moves here to you. And so I'm looking at some properties that are up ten percent in their utility budget, some that are down thirty percent.
Yes.
Some that are up three percent, some that are whole city, like, what's, like, there is virtually no one that's consistent.
Yeah, so, so here's what has happened in the past. I, I was the, the lonely gunman on the budget. And so a lot of the times I took what was actually in the budget and we just did what the city was increasing and then increased the budget. This year, now that I have the senior accountant, which I am blessed that she's on board, um, and Heather was able to help me dive in to a lot of the, I mean, if you saw the property detailed budgets to go line by line on every single one of those, she was able to do that for me and we kind of evaluated the utilities and hold to see, are we actually overbudgeting? And so in some areas, that's why you are seeing this fluctuation, is we're trying to bring them more back to actual, with the actual increases.
So it's dropping like ten to twenty percent between twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six, it's likely because you're budgeting less for it.
Yes, yes. We're budgeting less because we actually have cost savings right now in twenty-twenty-four because it's actually not that much.
And you have a more detailed line by line understanding of the consumption.
It's kind of the iterative process of being going through a budget. What I wanted to say is when you see this on the bottom and you see additional revenue, seven vouchers, two vouchers, so we're balancing the housing choice vouchers that are in this property, and so what we don't want to do, forget, what are we doing?
Eighty-five percent.
Eighty-five percent of the vouchers because those vouchers are project-based vouchers, so they can move. Or if somebody unfortunately passes away, then in this case, in shortfall, the voucher goes away, so we don't want to account for a hundred percent of the vouchers in these properties. Now, if they stay, what you're seeing is, estimate them is what it would look like.
Yeah, so if all, if all seven vouchers stayed, we could get additional twenty-three thousand dollars and end up with an added income of twenty. Um, is kind of how that presents. Um, so maintenance, um, also you'll see increases, allocation of positions and increased rates, um, with the custodian staff. And I also did put, um, all of the maintenance kind of sent me items that the properties really need, whether that's landscaping or, or beautifying the property, um, P-Tax being replaced, trying to get ahead of the game on those. Um, and so I did put, um, a contingency budget for them to take what they really want to have done with the property um, this next year and hopefully they can, you know, get what's needed as far as. And hopefully they can, you know, get what's needed as far as what I was able to do. And then for general costs, the fluctuation in that is insurance. Most of those you'll see is an increase. Val River had a decrease because their wind and hail was adjusted downward. But most of them received an increase. Hearthstone was a twenty percent increase, but that was because they just had a fire that cost about four hundred thousand dollars. So most received increases. But I. So that's kind of where the increases and decreases lie between these properties. Does anybody have any specific questions on particular properties? For the Hearthstone and the Lodge, this is where you can see the, the big fluctuation. From where we're at today and where we, where our capital needs assessment says we should be for replacement reserves, that is the biggest increase, which I'm sure we'll probably get, you know, four, four percent of thirty. So we'll see. Over campus, basically this budget is designed based on the LPA, LPA that was at closing. So we don't have any costs. We don't know what the actual costs are going to be, but we kind of have to start out with what they actually closed as their operational budget. And so that's what we're working with right now, along with their developer fee payments. Most of our developer fees are paid, with the exception of AMSA. AMSA, I'm having a really hard time because as you saw, there's only four thousand dollars left in the budget. Doesn't leave much to pay the, our developer fees. And I haven't been able to pay the developer fees for years. So hopefully, maybe we'll have a little cash. Right now I'm at a hundred and twenty K, I think. Just even a little cash to start paying developer fees on that. The Suites actually is, it has a good cash flow. I budgeted forty for this year, but that technically, I think, might actually get paid this year. So we won't have to have that budget. And then the Suites developer fees are fully paid too. So the only property that will be outstanding is Village on Main, which is probably going to get paid quickly because of, they have not only eighteen PBB vouchers, they have eighteen HCV vouchers there right now. So they have a really good cash flow. And then ascent.
So then this, so Zenia's getting contracted, that's like one of the situations when it's up about thirty, thirty-one percent probably in terms of costs.
Yes.
And is that because you have a better, a more accurate understanding of the needs? Or is there something else going on there?
That they, they, Zenia under budgeted. So this property is, this is their first year after their closing. So usually they have to run with what their operational budget was, and they only budgeted sixty-nine thousand for their. Partially, some of it's storm drainage. Storm drainages, they didn't budget on, it's a per-unit cost. And so that's some, some, they're seeing issues there. They're seeing issues in electricity and water. I know they requested the maintenance team to try to do something on the P-TAC units where it can't go like below a certain amount or above a certain amount to alleviate some utility costs, but we still haven't seen anything happen there.
So Zenia is an interesting animal. So when we look at all of the other budgets, those are budgets that are under your direction and your authority. Zenia is actually not, but we're showing it to you anyway because Zenia is owned, is fully owned by Element Properties. And they're contracting with us as a third-party manager. So when you look at how they build the performers and everything starting off, when you look at the ascent numbers, we were actively involved in kind of, here's what we think the estimates are going to be. When you're in as a third-party manager, there's an arms-length transaction from that in terms of, that's their world. So they're contracting with us for management financials of which Kendra has to do. And it does create some tension points in terms of department accounting departments and how we look at things and how we do it. But that is fully under the control of Element Properties because they're the owners.
Kendra, you're not keeping a meth reserve anymore?
Uh, no, no. Mainly because it just, it's not something built in a, like, a lot of the investors are asking like, what's this reserve? We didn't have this built into our portfolio. And it's also based on, you know, what we have left at the end of the day. And it's really hard to.
And, and no big capital improvements either, but you've added things to the maintenance.
Yeah, so we add kind of a contingency, like where, if you look at the detailed listing of the budgets, the very last line item under maintenance, it's called contract other costs. That's kind of where their money is to do landscaping or do other stuff. HVAC is P-Tax, you know, if they want to actually replace P-Tax. Spring Creek is on a plan for three years, replacing twenty each year. So.
And many of the capital improvements that we're doing at the Suites, we're getting grant funds for, which wouldn't be shown here.
But you're not concerned about meth expenses this year?
I don't know.
Oh, every, concerned about meth expenses. I mean, technically, the Suites actually has a big health and safety budget within theirs. What we, what I've seen actually from a lot of the meth that's been happening is we've been able to clean it. So using seventy services, you know, we've been able to actually clean it and it hasn't been a full demo type of situation.
Between technology improvements and just testing out new methods of cleaning, we've seen some success there and saving money and time.
Frankly, that's the staff as a whole being on top of activities that are occurring and dealing with the issues quickly. Because if you don't deal with it quickly, then you're in a full gut. And so I think that's a big part of, you know, Lauren, Quincy and all the property managers and maintenance folks staying on top of it and talking to Sarah.
She stepped out.
She stepped out, but also working with Sarah and communicating and dealing with the issues quickly. I think what we ran into when they were significant issues early on is we were inheriting those issues and they've been occurring for a long period of time.
So for Zenia, the housing authority has absolutely zero percent ownership interest?
No. Zero, zero one percent. But we don't get the cash flow.
Special limited marketer, but we're not, we're not in the cash flow.
Well, I was going to say, because then they'd be on that property taxes.
Yeah, yeah.
So, but since point zero one percent qualifies.
It's an SLP.
So we do have, we charge a fee for our services.
I can charge enough.
It certainly does not cover what we put in.
I think something that's interesting just to point out with development, because, you know, we're running into the, we ran into this with Zenia. We're probably going to run into it with Ascent, although I think Ascent's happening faster. You know, the, to what Kendra was saying about the utility budget not being enough, you know, we, we closed on this deal and agreed on this property budget and staffing budget back in twenty, with twenty twenty-three costs and rates. And we know what's happened since then. And so we're stuck with that budget, which is why we were struggling even in twenty twenty-four, covering our twenty twenty-four costs for staff and insurance and all these things, utilizing twenty twenty-three numbers, which we agreed to. So we're being more thoughtful and hope, hopefully pushing back a little more every time we get into one of these new, new properties, whether it's the third-party, how we negotiate those costs and budgets, or even ascent, which we are co-GP. Being more realistic about setting that budget, knowing that it's not actually going to get built for another year or two. And things can change between now and then. I think we're going to be far better set up with Ascent than we were with this property because we didn't get to choose this necessarily.
What are the inflationary factors in?
Yeah. Thinking ahead, making sure our costs are covered. I mean, from my experience as a developer, you work tirelessly on a proposed budget and the investor is like, they'll cut more, cut more, cut more. And you're like, this is not realistic. I can't operate a property even with this, at these rates today. Things like snow removal and insurance will just blow the budget. So we're, we're constantly thinking about that as we put these budgets together. Because it's not worth putting all the effort in if you know you can't actually operate it. And then we have to pick up, the guarantor, whether that's LHA or the owner for Zenia in this case, has to pick up the difference. So.
So LHA general fund, it, so we do have a change this year. We are getting more reoccurring revenue. Some of that is Ascent's management fees. Some of it is also the amount that we have invested. Prior to twenty twenty-three, we weren't investing any of the money that we had from the developer fees. We have now about five million and that's earning anywhere from fourteen to twenty percent a month in interest. So we're looking at about a hundred and eighty K a year, just in interest alone. Now, obviously, as we start to have to pull from that money, that, that will decrease, but we're in a good situation right now with our expenses. We're about four ninety-six is what we would need. And this is just on the LHA general fund. When we get to the next slide, it's going to kind of put all of our admin into it, which is LHA general fund, the Briarwood housing complex, and then also our HCV money that comes in for admin from HUD. So this is where the general fund lands. The capital reserve is literally to fund our trucks. So the money that we bring in for snow removal, we put an amount in a reserve account so that we can replace those trucks when they, when they come due, which is about, they've given me an eight-year lifecycle, so. And then you also have money coming in from Spring Creek, but also, we also have to pay money to DOH for Spring Creek's mortgage. And that was when we transitioned Spring Creek from LHDC to LHA. We did put two things in the budget this year, a fifty K contingency, and this is only for emergency one-time pass that Harold would have to approve, and it's just kind of a cushion. And then twenty-five K for replacing, finding pre-development projects coming through the pipeline that would be LHA ownership related. What we're finding is sometimes you have to do, you have to get lawyers involved and you have to have pre-costs paid for. So they wanted to add a twenty-five K pre-development cost for those, for those projects that come in.
Do you, on all of your properties, do you use the same insurance company or are there different insurance companies?
So we use different, we use the same for really all the properties. So it is called HEI, so they, they are specific to housing authorities and managing affordable properties. We are running into a pickle though, because some of our new affordable properties like Ascent, they can't do that property because it's too costly.
It's brand new.
It's brand new and it's like twenty-six million to cover it, plus the income, plus, you know, so it, they, they would have to get insurance to insure us for that property. So that one is going to have to go out to open market. And so any projects, we're kind of in, LHA's kind of in a middle situation. So we don't have a low amount of properties where we fit really nice with HEI and we don't have a really large portfolio that we can get into the open market and still get good discounted costs. So that's kind of where we're struggling right now.
Growing pains.
Yeah, growing pains right now. So most of the properties are with HEI, but all of our like professional liability, our excess policies, they're actually with different companies. But we use the same broker as the city.
So part of this is, so you look at the bottom and you're going to see again, this is in the fund balance sheet, we'll talk through it. But you can see at the bottom in twenty twenty-five, we had to draw down nine hundred and three thousand on the fund balance. And then this year, we're drawing six hundred and twenty-six thousand down the fund balance. So we've talked to you all about, so the way that we see the budget, putting on a city hat versus the way housing authorities typically see the budget is different. And, and so in most cases, what, what's happening within the financial system and the way they're functioning functioning is they live off of development fees. So when we talked about when we took over, we needed to really ramp up the pace on creating projects to create development fees, that was because there wasn't any projects in the pipeline. So that's what was actually driving the financial issues of the housing authority because they weren't replenishing the fund balance through that building concept. You can see by building what it, and you'll see it in the other sheet, what it does in the fund balance, but that's the drawdown. Watch this because it's going to show something else, but we'll walk you through why we're showing it and what we're trying to accomplish to get a worst-case scenario, but then what we're really trying to accomplish. Because my desire is to not rely on what is inherently one-time funding through development fees and build it to where we have ongoing funding that actually lets us balance the budget. And we'll walk you through some things that we're going to have to think about.
So next, we'll go on to the voucher programs. The, you know, one side is literally just the housing choice vouchers. So that's your PBB vouchers and your HCV vouchers, what they bring in for revenue and what we spend, leaving kind of a balance of what HUD expects, expects us to leave in our reserve at the end of the year so we don't go into shortfall. You'll also see, and this is the difference, this forty thousand dollar reduction. I actually kind of did some evaluation of like what, what positions today are also getting paid by HCV. And is it enough, like, are they doing more work there than is allocated? And so we were able to allocate a little more money based on the, the amount that we would get for administrative costs. Maintenance and operations is literally just inspections that we have to have done on a biannual basis for each one of our housing choice vouchers. And then you have our single-room occupancy. That is a specific project for the in-between that is also HUD-driven. And we submit a budget for them on October first. So that budget's been submitted and it's, it houses eight.
Project-based vouchers at the in-between.
The next is, I kind of wanted to give you guys, and you haven't seen this before. This is an LHA general fund analysis. So kind of to show you the reoccurring admin revenue that we have coming in the door, from management fees to snow removal to Briarwood office. And I highlighted the Briarwood office because we are like in the process of possibly selling that property. So those, you know, the revenue plus the expenses, there would be like a seventy-two thousand dollar difference in that property if, if, if we do sell it. So we would have to make up seventy-two thousand dollars of reoccurring income to come in the door. It also has the, the interest income that's coming in. Then, then the next blue section is literally hundred percent HCV and LHA operational staff. We currently have eleven positions. That includes like all the accounting staff, everybody that's one hundred percent not budgeted elsewhere in the city or other city positions that are also paid by the city as well. The, the red is the additional city costs we pay. So we pay for a device specialist at one hundred percent. The executive director has a twenty percent. Housing and community investment is twenty. Accounting manager, she processes LHA's payroll, so she gets a ten percent. And then we have Sarah's position at forty-three point five. City attorney is a flat fee. And then we have the rental space. And the rental space is literally just for the HCV staff. So those costs altogether, the total expenditures is two point one million. And we have one point six reoccurring revenue coming in the door along with, so then that puts us kind of in a deficit of five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, looking at the admin, the recurring that we have coming in and the admin expenditures.
So one of the things we're looking at in the IGO at the city is the device specialist. So when we kind of jumped into this, they were on their own computer system, phone systems under issues. And so what we said is, well, we think we're going to need a device specialist dedicated to the housing authority based on usage. We actually, when we made the transition in the first few years, there was talking about a thousand dollars. I've asked them to relook at this because our guts, our gut, my guts, tell me that that's actually going down. So they're running that calculation as we speak. And so we went ahead and budgeted for a hundred and two thousand. And so we went ahead and budgeted for a hundred and two thousand as an expense. But within a day or so, I should actually have what the actual number is like we do ATF. And, and hopefully it actually goes down based on the work, the performance, which is really a tailwind to what we're talking about financially. To put it in perspective, I mean, from a technology perspective and really the things that are coming in from the city, probably more so for Councilman Popkin since he wasn't here. But when we slid in, they were paying about two hundred and fifty thousand for the executive director. They were paying just over a hundred thousand for the chief financial officer. So for two positions, they were spending at about three hundred thousand dollars, which was creating some of the headwinds. So what we've been able to do is take some economies of scale to, to actually hire more accounting staff by eliminating some expenses and doing some other things. And so we still are seeing that that really is in place because if we, if we basically pulled this out, let me say three ninety-seven, my gut tells me that the functional cost, if, if the housing authority had to absorb it, it's probably going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of six to six hundred and fifty thousand when you're, you're looking at what that means to take that on. So those are things that we're, we're trying to get more specific on. So it's not my gut, but you think we can bring some of these costs down.
If you sell the Briarwood apartments, are you going to, are there investors there? Or are you going to make enough money to balance this budget?
No, LA, so Briarwood is fully owned by LHA. There are no investors involved in this budget. Normally at the Briarwood, we do budget an events tech and a community manager. They are not budgeted at this property. And they are all budgeted at Village on Main right now. Because I wanted to make sure that Village on Main could actually sustain the cost if they needed it, if we do sell it. So no, there's no property or there's no actual salary cost or benefit cost to the property. So it's really only cost to operate it. So if we sell it, it would be, you would take that money that we pay out. Obviously, we have a mortgage there, which is about four hundred and fifty K. So you'd have to pay that off. And then that would also become part of development money. That would fund the general fund for, for a number of years.
Development fee revenue.
Well, it's not development fee, but it would act like our development fee revenue. So it would be the sale moving across a number of years. So this next one is kind of the general fund balance. The top section, the first four rows, is kind of our investing balances at the moment. So that is just literally taking what our investment is, then taking what our long-term developer fees that we haven't received yet. We may have recognized it or we haven't received it yet. And then the fund balance that would be needed to support. So kind of the balance of where kind of our cash would flow. But the, the table underneath that includes all of our liabilities that we have on the books that we might have to pay out. So that includes like pension liability. So that's why you'll have the differences in cost, cash versus actually what's happening on the books. So it includes the liabilities.
So part of this on line three where you see the fund balance. So remember we talked about, this is what we're drawing down. So you see it from nine hundred to five eleven. Our goal is to actually draw that fund balance down to zero. But from a conservative standpoint, we actually did an inflationary indicator, assuming that we can't, to give this kind of a worst-case scenario in terms of what that would do to the fund balance. So if we keep making progress on drawing the operational drawdown on the fund balance, what it's actually going to show is that this number is actually growing if you're going to a zero over here. Because that's truly where we're aiming, but we needed to see worst-case scenario. Now, when you, when you look at this fund balance and we talked about projects from a housing authority perspective, really driving that upward number and the investing balances that Kendra's talking about. What you see is us placing two projects in, one in 2028 and one in 2023. And what that's really telling us is, is that if, if we don't get one coming in around this timeframe, then we start worrying about this number, assuming that we can't draw down the ongoing operating expenses as being a problem where we actually end up in a negative. But again, we're trying to do this. So we have to have a project hit at 2028. One of the things that we're learning through at the moment is that traditional affordable housing projects don't, will never allow us to get to the point where we can truly get that ongoing operational revenue to get to zero. Because you're just so restricted, as you can see from the other projects, in terms of what kind of funding you can actually pull out of it. What we found, and they went Lauren and Molly and I don't know who all went to the Alzey Colorado Conference, what we've been talking about over the last year is really how do we move into a mixed-income project? And what we mean by mixed income is you have twenty to, let's say twenty to twenty-five percent of truly affordable housing. You layer in, or thirty percent, whatever it is. So let's say you do thirty percent truly affordable. You do thirty percent of income qualified attainable. So think about setting the rents at seventy and eighty percent AMI. But in perpetuity, it's that seventy and eighty percent that's going to set the price of the rents in the future, which gives people certainty in terms of what their rental increase is going to be. And then maybe you do forty percent market rate in that. That combination, when you start playing around with proformas, actually starts spinning off a fair amount of money once you get stabilization. So we played with some proformas. Even stressed fairly hard, around year six, you, you start spending off money. But by the time you hit like year ten, you could spend off, depending on the number of units, let's say seven hundred and fifty thousand to a million dollars a year in terms of that cash flow, which then allows you to start bringing it back in to the operational components of the housing authority. Now, it gets much more complicated because the, the, the housing authority doesn't really have a credit profile, which means that HCI is going to have to slide in beside the housing authority in the city. And so then when you look at financing one of these projects, you have to actually come in and think about it from the standpoint of do you issue COPs? Or the building actually is the collateral for the debt over time once it's built. But the COPs then are, are probably going to have to be guaranteed by the city in a full faith guarantee to, to secure the debt. Because otherwise, if the housing authority does it, your interest rate is going to be probably three percentage points higher, which starts creating some interesting portfolio issues. But then as you're running out, then actually you could create an income source for two things. One is the HCI component and start pulling income into HCI based on their investment. Then you pull income into the housing authority based on that. And in that, you get management fees. So to do what we want to do is really going to require us to, to really examine what and how we build something, but with an eye not to just building the project and this is what it's going to mean, but an eye fifteen to twenty years out when you're looking at a long-term financial solvency of, of the housing authority. The other thing I think, I think it really does is it also starts reducing reliance on state and federal funding. Because if you can do a couple of these mixed-income projects and you can really generate that amount of money, do we need some of these funding sources with the screens attached? Or are we able to start financially, not self-performing from a building perspective, but financially self-supporting and creating, you know, capital in terms of what we're doing? So the viewpoint on this has shifted fast, but we think we can do it. And I think with this group, I don't know if you have another meeting. Yeah, you have one more meeting, right?
Uh, before, before the end of the year?
Mm-hmm.
We have two, November and December.
This group that's elected, you have one more meeting.
Oh, yes, correct, correct, one more, November tenth.
There's an opport, you know, so you all know we were talking about another opportunity and it just, everything in it was really making it hard to accomplish because geographically and unit, sorry, unit numbers just kept, we kept beating our head on the proverbial financial wall because you couldn't make it pencil. And you were always giving something up. An opportunity presented itself to us two weeks ago that we think actually is big enough, gives us a chance to be flexible in unit counts, is probably one of the best options. So it may be in the very near future, we're talking to you all about actually kickstarting off the 2028 project.
Is that, oh, I'm sorry.
Um, yeah, it's a good idea, Harold. And it's actually more inclusionary where it's mixed income level. Sorry, we didn't look at each other for a second.
No, we didn't. Sorry. Um, is this the property that is near Zinnia and the suites that you talked, it's a different property?
I can't say that right now. We're in negotiations.
Those darn negotiations, they're going to stifle us. Is that still that property though that is over that you had asked us about at one point? What do we want to, what do we want to see built there?
We're still looking at it. I think the challenge is right now is, and if you talk to all roads, if you talk to all, you'll hear the same thing from everyone is, I think we're all still working on stabilizing the area because there's just things that happen. And, and I think that's probably what slowed it a little bit, honestly, is that. I think also understanding the, the headwinds on that type of pro forma and what that looks like and what we're seeing financially is, is another thing that's made us all kind of go, okay, let's, let's breathe a little bit. Because we're still, and, and more so we, Quincy and Lauren are really learning some significant operational lessons with their management staff. And, and my recommendation with the board is we need to really get our arms around this. Similar to what we had to do with the suites. Remember, we went through the same iteration with the suites. Because we really need to get our arms around it. Because what we're also finding is a lot of change in that location creates other challenges because of change. So we're thinking through that a little bit more. But now this is a different location. So, so generally with this group, we kind of teeing up this concept, we, we danced around it a little bit. But really teeing up with this group, this idea of this mixed income approach is really kind of fully digging into it. Because if you all don't have an appetite for it, please tell me now. Because that's going to take a lot of time. And, and if you don't have an appetite, tell us, we'll look at something else. But if you're okay with this kind of mixed income approach, we're going to, we're going to go pretty quick.
I like the idea.
I do too.
The other advantage of it is, is it's a split, and to Aaron's point, it's not all untaxed. It will be both tax-exempt and taxable, which also then helps the broader system.
For sale and rental?
No, just rental. Now, before sales start, affordable attainment, that's in the HCI world.
And there is, we are still, that's still a priority to keep going on.
Well, that is the end of the budget. Was very interesting. Unless anybody else has any additional questions? You covered it very well.
No, not very good.
You did explain it very well, but it seemed difficult.
May I make a suggestion?
Yes.
For the next council, can you have a key sheet for all the acronyms for people who don't understand what, what you're talking about? And I think that's very important for someone to actually understand the budget. Just a page with the, with what HC, I know you have HCI. All these things, say, you know.
We can, we have one of those prepared and we can definitely include that in our outline.
Yeah, just include it in the packet so that people, when they're reviewing it.
So it's fresh.
Right. I think it should be at the end of every packet. It's going to take a while for someone to understand what that means.
Yes.
Otherwise, Commissioner Popkin asks a lot of questions.
And you really don't want that.
Or people won't say anything and they won't know. You want people to be informed when they're making decisions and, you know. So I think that's very important.
So do you think we need a vote on this one? If you're all ready.
I move the budget.
The, uh, is it resolution twenty twenty-five?
Not quite, there will just be a motion to adopt the budget.
Uh, budget, uh, budget as presented.
Sorry.
It's been moved by Commissioner McCoy saying we buy Commissioner Popkin to adopt the budget as presented for LHA. Is it the 2026 budget? Yes, to adopt the 2026 budget as presented. Any discussion anymore? Seeing that was voted, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous. We've not adopted it.
Thank you very much. There's one follow-on action item that's on your agenda that we put ourselves back up to that fair market rent standard summary page. It's, I, I, you know, Kendra kind of covered it. So I want to, we do need a resolution on this one to mark that we're adopting these fair market rent standards. And then I'm thinking I, I will just see if you have any further questions on those.
Seeing that.
One, one question here. Is there, is there any downside to, to accepting a lower FMR for this year?
A lower what?
Fair market.
Fair market.
Is there, is there any down, we need an acronym, sorry. See, um, is there, is there any downside to accepting a lower one now? And if for some reason it were to increase in twenty-seven, what would be that consequence?
So if we accepted, well, so meaning if we, we accepted a lower one, meaning not adopting the 2026?
Well, sorry, I guess if we're, because the 2026 is lower than the other.
Than 2024.
Twenty-four, yeah.
It's a weird, we had a weird dip.
Yeah.
So what we're trying to do is stay pretty on target with market rents out there so that we are not having trouble leasing up. Also that we are, we are low enough that we're not having trouble leasing up, high enough that we're able to cover our costs. So it's that delicate balance. You know, it's, it, this is very atypical. We have not seen the fair market rents. They skyrocketed from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-four and then went very much corrected in twenty twenty-five. This is HUD setting these numbers. And then now we're like, okay, so some healthy growth, but not this crazy movement. I would say that really what we're trying to do is just strike that balance. I'm going to answer your question.
And for 2025, we adopted the 2025 fair market rents. And the same thing applied. If you were at 2024, you were frozen. If you weren't at the 2025, you could increase to that.
Adopting a lower standard would put more pressure on the tenants because then they would have to come up with more of the difference between whatever they can actually get.
Yeah, that's really the big thing. Standard of private.
And, and within the memo, there is the caveat that if you, if you're at the 2024 fair market rents, you're frozen. If you choose to move, you're going to go down to the 2026.
So this one, we need a vote as well to adopt the fair market rents.
Okay. I move resolution LHA 2025-14.
Is that, that is this one?
Yeah. Approving the 2026.
It's down to the tourist family, the amount.
All right. The chair moved in and it was seconded by Commissioner Yoro. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And that passes through. We're now at development updates.
Um, yep, I'm going to go ahead and show you something, very recent news that is exciting.
Ooh, exciting news.
We're not done.
I was just going to say, no, it's not exciting.
I don't want, it's not.
I don't know the full details, but the former county commissioners did vote to slow their minimum wage increases. I didn't read the particulars, I just saw that, right?
I'm making sure this is the correct.
They did.
Well, I ran it through fast and tried to bully everybody.
Well, plus they didn't ask. They said, oh, yes, it's state. So you can ask me.
Okay, so qualified census tracts.
They tied, they tied to over in the CPI.
Right, so, um, qualified census tracts are updated each year by HUD. They do use census data. To, um, update these census tracts. When you have a qualified census tract, that opens up pretty much a funding opportunity for those areas. For example, if Ascent was located in a qualified census tract, then. About thirty percent of the cost of that ECE could have been covered by the tra- tax credits. Because it wasn't, we self-funded the ECE for that three million dollars of construction. This, in the last few years, our qualified census tracts have been reducing. So the definition of a qualified census tract is that at least fifty percent of households have incomes below sixty percent AMI or have a poverty rate of twenty five percent or more. So we've seen those census tracts reducing, which is good for Longmont residents, right, in terms of incomes. More challenging to find those opportunities for extra funding sources for projects. In twenty twenty five, these were our census tracts. Look at twenty twenty six.
Ooh, wow.
Old Town. This is very surprising to me.
Yeah.
It opens up some opportunity. Also, it could show you a lot about what's happening with incomes in our community.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so interestingly, so. Here's our, uh, Hoover, this is the Ascent at Hoover Crossing is here. Crispin is here. Aspen Meadows and, um, I think Aspen Meadows is just outside, right? Just outside, right in here, and all these, Spring Creek and Fall River further outside. Uh, our Sunset Campus, not in and not expected to be in, given the rest of Southwest Longmont, um, and that census tract area. Um, something that would be benefi- if that, if, if the suites and Zinnia, the Sunset Campus were ever in a qualified census tract. That would open up doors for funding if we wanted to build something on that backland someday that included services. That would open up a funding source for that. I don't expect that to be a possibility, so. Pretty much anything that we want to put in that's more on the service side and not just units would have, would be, have to come from another source.
Is that, is the one that you're talking about that you can't tell us about?
Is it in this?
It is. It's inside.
Ooh, good.
So I just wanted to highlight this, this is, this was a surprise and came out this week. Somehow the, the HOD map still came out even though they're not there.
This isn't the same as you with the tax credits, right, or they, or did they?
Scump it up, right?
So, this is interesting because what determines a qualified census, this is a weird, because this is a Boulder County number.
It's based on census da- well, it's census data, it's based on the ACS.
But don't they use the Boulder County incomes?
For incomes, but, um.
Try, try.
But, well, that's a good question. How much they rely on the income limits of Boulder counties that are set by HUD.
So if you, if you think of private developers, where you saw a lot of development occurring using the county line road. Is because when they were looking at financing and rents, that was also based on the Weldon County number, not a Boulder County number. So incomes play into this. And so as you're seeing. There's two stories to this that we, we've got to watch and be really careful with because at the same time, that's also probably a clear indication. Is that in other communities where the housing prices are higher. And the incomes are higher, that's kind of what we've been seeing then. And so what you'll see is people with higher incomes will come in. So there's more depth that we need to really go into understanding this because. It's an interesting thing that we've been seeing.
I just switched over to see if there was any difficult to develop areas identified that we don't have. So anyways, that was, um, something that is brand new this week. I don't know how HUD maps got put out, but HUD staff is in there, but that's, I'll still take it. Yeah, right.
Yeah, it's already here.
Um, I think, something I just want to highlight on, this is, this is related to development in terms of, uh, when we go out and seek out sources for development. But really it's related to LHA overall and Longmont overall. Is each year that we go to Housing Colorado for the past several, I am blown away every year by how. Much of an impact Longmont's efforts in the past five years have had and people are watching and our reputation is. I mean, maybe that will only sell us the good parts to our face, but our reputation is really great. Um, the state keeps using our examples. Um, they call us the teacher pet, teacher's pet, which I'm like, I'm gonna take that, that's a good thing. Uh, we just, we're putting ourselves out there a lot, going after opportunities and delivering on those opportunities, which is really leaving a mark. So that's just a thanks to all of you, especially for those that aren't going to be here after the next LHA board meeting. Um, just thank you for all your support and you, I hope that you're so proud of Longmont's housing efforts over the past years.
We are.
We are.
You've got the greatest LHA staff of any other community. Thank you.
Great thanks.
You make these changes.
You make so much fun. I am. Let me try and add in the first. Um, okay, so going back to development projects, Harold mentioned the middle income effort that we're trying to put underway. Um, and our, our timelines that we're trying to target for that. Um, we also, you know, the market is, we've been talking to a lot of developers about what has been happening? How are you guys making it through this tough time? Because a lot of our traditional affordable housing developers, other than our nonprofits, they're rocking and rolling. Um, but our private affordable housing developers really aren't moving on much right now. They're just kind of waiting out the storm. Um, a lot are trying to look for alternate, um, ways of doing business to, to get through this time if, until. Um, you know, either land or interest rates or some lever becomes a little bit easier. Um, I keep saying that we have funding sources. We were waiting, needing funding sources for so long. And now here locally, we're lucky enough to have that, but at the same time, the interest rate lever got flipped the other way, land prices, uh, in- uh, insurance, all of the things. Um, so some developers are looking at, well, maybe we buy an existing apartment building and at least, indeed restricted, at least pull cash flow. While we plan for the next development, at least do something to start generating, um, some revenue and some progress on meeting affordable housing goals. And some others are looking at market rate developments that made it almost to the finish line and then could not cross the finish line. Um, so we are keeping our eyes and ears out for opportunities that might be. You know, if our mixed income project, if that's our big, you know, big stretch project like Ascent was when we first started. Then maybe there's some opportunities for some quicker wins along the way too, to see how we can, um, have some things hitting a little sooner. While we work through the complexities of something bigger, we're trying to, to see what opportunities are out there for that. Um, this is all, that, those, those types of things are what we're looking at for the next two to three years. Um, we also know that we have already mentioned to you about how the Hearthstone and Lodge Rehab, that is a development project. That that's, um, quickly behind the heels on these, uh, one or two, if we can fit it. And if we're lucky enough to, um, get our, a tax credit award for the, like, uh, one of the quick win projects, if that ends up coming together. Um, I think on that tax credit side, you know, we, our last award was in twenty twenty two for Ascent. And then we are very hopeful that the Atwood Commons Project, that's being done with Bright Brickwell with LHA as a special limited partner. We are very feeling a lot of promise about that, getting a tax credit award next month. And then because LHA has not been GP on a project and on a tax credit award since twenty twenty two, then, um. We're thinking the timing could be right to, let's start lining up the Longmont projects and get those in front of CHAFA. So maybe a tax credit project that's, um, kind of a swifter move and more straightforward and while we work on this, this big idea. Um, and then coming behind those heels with the Hearthstone and Lodge exit. And because we talked about the balloon payment for Aspen Meadows neighborhood, I just wanted to mention that we are talking to First Bank, who is our, um, investor on the tax credits on that project. And we, we entered the fifteen year, um, we end the fifteen year compliance period in twenty twenty eight. And usually we wouldn't, we, it wouldn't be very, um, we wouldn't be very successful in getting a tax credit award for a rehab right then. It would be coming a few years after that, but we can do some things now to prepare for a smooth exit and then become, um, the. In essence, the full owners of that property in twenty twenty eight, and it looks like the financials are set up really well to do that. So that's props to Kendra because that was a, a challenge when we're getting it to Village and doing that, the first go around. So we're setting that things up well. So now we have a couple of projects in the pipeline for the next, you know, two to three to, working on. Hopefully two to three, not four year period, and then coming in with those two rehab projects right on the heels and also, of course, continuing that new development pipeline going forward. Um, we also mentioned Briarwood, so I just wanted to give an update there. We've been doing due diligence with, um, all of the. You know, the existing sources in the site, who is managing or who has compliance responsibilities on those funds such as DOH. Um, and we've crossed all of these hurdles and it's looking promising to use it for the purpose that we were thinking with Allroads. There's one last big question out there and it's for HUD though, and so we can't get them right now. So, um, it's al- it's actually the most challenging question too. It's, can we use HomeARP funds for a property that, can Allroads use HomeARP funds for a property that has existing tenants? That might solid cause some complications, but we're gonna work through that with them and see if they, uh, we can get some buy-in for that. Um, so we'll hopefully be doing that when they come back. Just hopefully soon. Um, and then finally, just to give an update on the Proposition 1B money, which is the Affordable Affordable Housing Tax, AHT. Uh, we have been negotiating the agreement language with Boulder County, both for a template agreement and then filling in for the twenty twenty five funds. We sent back our comments on that here, um, over a week ago and we're waiting to, for them to get back to us. Um, I will let you know that for twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six, it's more of a, um, apply it to a project. And, um, get the money on lockdown and be able to, to move it quickly and, and feed our pipeline. In twenty twenty seven, we included a proposition to, um, allow for some administrative costs to help cover. Um, you know, that's a lot of money to add to our pipeline. We have one housing project, uh, housing development project manager. That if we are having, increasing our pipeline over time, adding significant funding to it, we gotta have some, um, support there for how to actually get it done. So just letting you know, we're in the negotiation phase and, and seeing how that will come together and you, well, the city council. When that is already would be considering that agreement. So. Okay, any questions on development?
Nope. It all sounds good.
Operations.
Yep.
Operations.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, I'm here.
I slept on once.
I'm usually in bed by this time. Oh, so.
Oh, you wait, you're having a baby.
Thank you. I'm in February. Um, okay, sorry. The, the operations report hasn't truly changed. Um, Aspen Meadows is, is our, that's our problem child that we're trying to figure out right now. I just approved an application today that Summer sent over to me, so we do have six vacancies, they're not seven, so we are working, that's three since the beginning of this month. So we're still pushing for that. Um, this one is not for the thousand ninety eight, we actually found somebody for fourteen twelve, which is surprising. Um, so we're gonna get them in there. Their move in date is gonna be eleven one. Um, Fall River, still two vacancies, um, they're still working through unit one. One twelve and two oh five, uh, Spring Creek, I approved an application today that McKenzie sent over to me, so they only have one vacant, that move back person is moving in eleven three twenty five. Um, Hearthstone and Lodge, Jana has one person at the Lodge and she's still working through two applications over at the Hearthstone. And we do have applications on those two units, um, so that's great. We have an application in process at the Suites, so that will take us down to two. Um, Shelby and Equala are working through that, our HCV team. Um, those are vouchers, Nikki doesn't do those. So once they get those processed, then we will be able to get those applicants moving and we have. The last, the last unit that we have at Village on Main Street, which is sixty ninety five or sixty percent, we have a voucher client for that. Thank God, because that has been a nightmare to rent with the, uh, price being so high. We're still working through Aspen's list. I would be bothering Kendra. I bother her all the time. I'm gonna be bothering her even more to see what we can do. But as of right now, I've told Summer to push the normal rents and if somebody's very close to being able to make that, then let us know. We can discuss maybe adjusting that rent to get him in there. At the bottom, we have the affordable unit vacancy from last year to this year. I should have ran that through ten thirty one, so I will change that. Um, next month, but again, the numbers are almost the same. It's down a hundred thousand dollars, which, um. Is good as far as our vacancy count. So we are, we do have more vacant, we do have more occupied units this year than we did last year. Um, and the property update on the back was pretty much what I just ran through. There are no major, uh, no major projects happening. We have squared away everything with the fire at the Hearthstone. Those residents are back in. The two units that had the fire happen, we did relocate those two ladies to two other units within the property, um, so that's fine. And we're just currently trying to work through getting Ascent squared away. As far as hiring a property manager, I'm gonna give an offer tomorrow to somebody. We've worked through that with HR, we've found somebody, we're gonna do that. One of our property managers, Summer, who is at, um, Aspen Meadow Senior Neighborhood, she applied and she actually got the job for Ascent. So we're gonna be transitioning her, transitioning her over to Ascent. And the new hire that I'm going to offer tomorrow will be helping with the lease up, but ultimately they'll be stationed at Aspen Meadow Neighborhood Senior. They're very strong. We're really excited for them to come over and, and start. We have a lot of hope for them, so. Yeah, that's pretty much all of the new updates that we have going on with the properties. Anybody has any questions? Please let me know.
I just have one comment. Audrey, is she, has she moved out of the suites yet?
No.
So that's not considered, okay, it's not vacant?
No, it's not vacant.
Okay. That'll be next month.
Um, one thing that we didn't bring today, but we will be bringing next month, is a change to how we're, um, getting our applicants for the suites. Um, traditionally, LHA has held a waitlist for our units at the suites, the vouchers that we manage. Um, and that was combined with Briarwood for, back from when Briarwood was transitional housing, um, for the PBVs there. What we have found over the last year trying to fill our vacant units at the LHA-held units is we would reach out to tenants on the waitlist. Which had not been opened since twenty twenty three, and they had either moved on or couldn't get ahold of them. They're unhoused, so tracking them down, sometimes they'd have a case manager, a week a call, sometimes they wouldn't. And so our units are sitting vacant longer and longer at the suites. Um, Mental Health Partners, which is now Clinica, they go to local case conferencing every two weeks. And pull applicants through our Boulder County, um, Home Solutions Boulder County Local Case Conferencing. That's also where we get our clients for Zinnia. And if you remember, we made the shift from one home based out of Denver, which covered the whole state, to the local case conference. Um, because those applicants, it seemed, were more successful being integrated into the community and, and doing better and staying housed. Um, we have decided that it is in our best interest and the property's best interest and the client's best interest to also move to local case conferencing. And move away from. to also move to local case conferencing and move away from maintaining a waitlist which gets stale really fast. Most of the people that are on the waitlist are also working with the local case conferencing organizations anyway, so it's actually gonna make it more efficient and we'll be able to get paperwork faster and get units turned and people moved in much quicker. So, you'll be seeing, again, a change to the admin plan and the tenant selection plans, which we just approved two months ago. Um, so we're just gonna make slight changes to account for that because those documents guide that process. So, you'll see that coming next, next month. Well, maybe not all of you then. We'll see.
Some of them.
Yes. But that's gonna be coming and I'm, I'm really excited about that because the efficiency is good.
Really good. Uh, you've included the occupancy report.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, um, how about health and safety?
How much? Um, these are two months' calls for service, so the Suites had thirty floors, so you chopped that in half. That's pretty, that's pretty good. Um, some disturbances in Wolfher Ch- Checks, uh, nothing real consistent there. Village on Main had one, Fall River had two. Spring Creek had six and that was due to one of the residents that was spoken about earlier, that, uh, management has dealt with that. Hearthstone is three, Lodge two, and Briarwood zero. Uh, the only other thing that I have is that Quincy and I and Patrick get to start in more, get to start our ventures of, um, installing detectors in Ascent. So, we need out there this week and to walk through and kind of give, give Quincy a, a really quick, uh, conversation on where we need to place these and same with Patrick. So, each unit will be different due to the amount of bedrooms and where the bathrooms are located, so.
So, that's something we've been talking about for years and we are about to actually have them installed in a building, so it's pretty exciting.
Have the, you detected in the ones, in the buildings that they are, has it detected?
So, right now I only have one of, it's for an LHA property and it's an AMSA in the entryway and we've not had anything, anything spike on that. Yeah. And the rest of them that I monitor are in city facilities.
Yeah, you've spiced those. So, that's really good.
Remember in my office, you can see a front door. We were testing, we were seeing like a spike at what, three in the morning?
Oh, gosh.
In your office?
Yeah, it could have been somebody on the,
Outside?
On the outside in the patio area and it was getting stuck into the, the, the air filter. It was interesting. And then one battery exploded in my office and then it went.
And thank goodness it's, uh, fireproof.
Yeah.
Taken out at three AM. So, it's more of a deterrent? It's more of a cost savings, um, deterrence as well?
We're trying to be preventative.
But do you have to do mediation if you get a spike?
Probably then just might some of it. There's a, there's a, there's a process, there's a process of, you know, as soon as we find it, to dealing with it, to the tenant and the mediation portion as well.
Oh, really?
Absolutely.
On, on the safety issue that came up earlier, publicly divided to be heard, I kind of wanted to go over that in this section. Um, so a few things. We're really restricted when we go through fair housing laws in terms of what you can do in the tenant selection process. And I think part of what we've heard, we've all been in these conversations, is how do you let individuals stay in these units? We're, we're in a box in terms of what we can look at, what we can consider. Then, when individuals create situations, then there's another box that we get into in the processes that we have to do in order to correct the situation. And, and so, we definitely understand the challenge for the residents of these facilities, but we can't get outside of that box because the liability for us goes through the roof if we're not doing that step-by-step and managing all these issues. Because if you don't do it right on the front end, you can, you can get hammered off their housing laws. If you don't go through the process correctly, then you can get hammered for not handling evictions correctly and, and it's gotten harder through the last, um, legislative sessions. But to put it in perspective, how long can somebody live in your house before?
Two, it's, it's very great, but it's about two weeks.
About two weeks. So, if you let somebody live in your house consistently for over fourteen days and then you call the police and say, hey, they're not supposed to be here, we won't act on it because if it's there, you have to then go through the eviction process.
Is that why we have the fourteen-day, uh, visitation limits?
And so, have you seen this at times where we had to deal with this? There's been people in our community that have had to deal with this. And we get it, but I just wanted you to get a sense of, it's pretty prescriptive is what you can do. But yeah, if you, if I let Ken, if I let Quincy stay in my house and he was there for twenty-one days and then Quincy does something and I'm like, Quincy, you need to leave, and he goes, I'm not leaving. And I call the police and then they cut, they're gonna go, now you need to go through the eviction process because then it becomes a civil matter. So, I know you get these issues coming at you in emails a lot. Reach out to us, talk to us and we'll work you through the details because they're constantly in that world and they don't tell me all of it, but when it starts getting bad, they tell me. Um, but I wanted you to get a sense of how we're challenged in, in this world, both from the tenant selection process all the way through how do you deal with problems.
Is that part of the orientation, prepackaged, that information?
It's all in the lease as well. So, when we, when we are moving people and we do let them know that if you do let somebody stay with you for more than fourteen days, they are considered a tenant at that point. Um, choices, we either evict the whole apartment, we evict that specific individual. There's a lot of red lines to that, but we do let them know upfront, yes.
Do you mean for you guys? The orientation for new council members?
No, no.
Oh, pretend, okay.
Whoever is, yeah, pretend.
Thanks for that information. That's because we will have just residents saying, I can't get rid of this person.
Well, Colorado's a different animal. What I've noticed with my kids now, like when they sign the lease, each one of my kids, when they were living with each other, each had to sign their own lease. And I had to be the guarantor for them individually. And so what you're starting to find is even in that private world, the reason why they're doing it is because if you have a group of people living together, it's much harder to evict a group. But if it's, you know, Councilmember Rodriguez raising Cain in a unit and then I'm never leaving in my room, I can deal with Councilmember Rodriguez as an apartment manager. So, we're, we're even seeing this in the market world right now. So, I just wanted you to know.
Thank you. Uh, any commissioner comments anymore? Commissioner comments?
Okay, go ahead. One thing, um, I think since we're doing so well with the Housing Authority, um, I know there's a Housing Authority, well, Austin Housing Authority, they have a podcast. And I was thinking, she said, oh, oh.
I wanna do a reality show.
No.
I wanna do a podcast. I want a reality.
It's so exciting, what we do. So much drama.
A credit would go down.
This Tim is just going, no one, no one.
The reason why I said that is because I know, and I have said this several times, when we go to conferences, when we go, um, out of town, um, people, I, I do puff, you know, I'm excited when people know about Longmont and what we have done. I think it will be really, um, impactful for the state of Colorado and probably other housing authorities to see how, how you all have turned the, the Housing Authority around and all the, all the risks that you have also taken that has, um, been noticed throughout this country. So, I was thinking that a podcast would be, really be good to invite, you know, those, uh, so-called experts, um, in the state of Colorado or even out of the state of Colorado that are talking about housing, especially because housing is so huge. And just talk about some of the things that you all had to work through as a housing authority. Um, I just, I don't know, I just think that you all would be really, really good, especially being the second housing authority to own, have a property with a daycare, but we would have first to, uh, get the dirt going, shovel the dirt. So, those are things that you can do it too. Other housing authorities can do it too. You can come from the, almost the brink of death and look at where we are, you know? And I think it'll be very inspirational, motivational. I think you all will be amazing and become top experts in the nation, honestly, so.
I'm gonna need another staff member if we're gonna do a podcast.
I'll be off, so.
Let's do it.
We'll be here.
Well, what happened with Christina Pacheco and the, and the dashboard? That went to National League Cities and they made a presentation, so that's the sort of thing.
Well, we had like John Garcia that just went to DC on, uh, I think with CYF with the Rewind Program and the SRO, so it's a good idea.
We have thought about preparing something like that for like the NARO Conference or the House of Colorado Conference. Um, at some point, gotta hit that right time.
It's a good idea.
I think it's, I think people are interested.
Absolutely.
How did you do that? How?
And they do ask those questions locally, you know, Boulder's asked, when we did the, uh, minimum parking, Aaron Brockett said, how did you guys do that?
You just do it.
He said, he convinced council to.
I moved the adjourned?
What? Didn't move by Commissioner McCollis, like by Commissioner Chris, that we are doing all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?